For our citizens of Harris County, thank you for all that you do for us in Jesus' name. For our people.
It's a pleasure to join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of our agenda this evening is the approval of our bid for the regular session of August 17th of 2021 is their motion.
I'll write a motion to approve and Nancy Donahue has a little change on the effort she shared with everybody.
Okay, put down a motion as they're set.
Set.
Any motion to discuss it? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item of our agenda this evening is the appearance of citizens. Now that Northwest Harris Fire Department has a representative here tonight.
Hi.
How are you today?
I'm good. My name is Kelly Peckhoff and I am Chief Peckhoff's wife. He is actually deployed to home of Louis Scannell helping with hurricane stuff, but he wanted me to inform y'all that Northwest Harris Volunteer Fire Department is no longer going to be running Flatshoals Fire District calls. That is not part of our district and we're no longer going to be servicing those citizens.
So who's district is it?
Flatshoals.
There is no Flatshoals Fire. Twenty years. For twenty years.
It's not our.
There is no Flatshoals.
Mr. Byron.
I'm Byron Hocke, retired chief of Northwest Harris and president of the board of directors for Northwest. Flatshoals, Northwest Harris has been running Flatshoals for, as Nancy said, almost 20 years now. It's back, there's been, I think, two, at least two other county managers besides Randy that have addressed this issue with us in the past. What's happening is we're getting, haven't got and are continuing not to get any cooperation in running those calls with West Point Fire Department. What has also happened, as you all know, there's been more emphasis on us with COVID and other things that have happened recently. Fire departments have been more and more involved in calls. An awful lot of the calls have been for fire alarms. They're also for EMS support and not just fire itself. One of the things that we suffer is we get no credit for any of the calls that we make into the Flatshoals area. ISO, as you all know, we have to report under and they set up what our ratings are for our residents within our fire district. Any calls we go on outside of our fire district unless they're for some assistance in Harris County, including West Point, we still don't get any credit for those calls. So anything that our volunteers do, the hours spent, the various calls, gets no accreditation on it. So we have to offset that with training and calls hopefully that are within our own district. One of the things that's been discussed over and over and over again is that West Point would be of some assistance to us on Flatshoals. West Point elects not to go outside of their district, which still some of the West Point district around the industrial area is the old Flatshoals. In fact, the old Flatshoals Fire Department building is right across from the south entrance under a lot of vine and trees right now, but that's where it was located at one time. There's been many attempts to get and resurrect the Flatshoals department from residents that are down in that area with Sino avail, including past Commissioner Jim Woods took it upon himself about, I believe, 10 years ago now to canvass the area and he got, he got no following. So the area is not attended to, but at the same time, the growth in the area has gotten greater and greater. You all know that. You've got an industrial area down there that is, is growing. You've got residents that are wanting to move out into that area and there's been some development. And so the frequency of calls has gotten greater. We have to sometimes go into the city of West Point and to be able to accommodate a call like it's down on the Old Boy Scout Road and all, we're literally going through the city of West Point to get to that call when West Point is within spitting distance of the, of the residents. I'm not here or we're not here crying. We're here from a practical standpoint that it's just gotten more than we can handle. And I think you all are asking too much of West Point, I mean, excuse me, too much of Northwest Harris and not getting some assistance from West Point. Either that or you need to realign the fire districts. And if we get a share of it, then it'll be up to us to manage it and look after it. But some of the things that have been suggested, and one of them you may know, is putting a station at the, at the industrial park. That's been on the books back since Danny was involved prior to his retiring. Good idea. West Point's agreed that they'd like to do that, but the county's going to have to build it and they aren't going any further than they do right now as far as, as trying to accommodate calls, which means that in some cases Pine Mountain, Waverly Hall, Shiloh, they all go outside of their areas necessarily, at least within five miles of their, of their stations to still respond to calls which may or may not be within their set district. So these things have all been, I guess, discussed and cussed and gone over a number of times and realistically, they're all meant well and we're not trying to say we, we're not going to participate. If we're needed, we're on standby to run to any call that needs it and we're running calls, but somebody has to, I guess you'd say, pull the trigger on this a little bit more and recognize that it's just gotten to the point now where fuel costs, nothing available, volunteers, I mean, I could go on and on and I don't mean to step in front of Kelly, but I have a history with this. And that is to the extent that we've gone on calls where West Point has pulled out on us, they've already had hoes laid out and everything else. And when we arrive on the scene, they pull the hose and we start to roll out. Well, that is a fatal mistake in my opinion. I don't care who you are, if you've got hoes out, then let us take over the hose and the engines and fight the fire, but don't pull hoes out. It's already been put out there to do that. West Point has benefited to some extent from all of this. West Point used the old fire knocker that was in the station over at Flatshoals to get a, a grant for a new fire truck. West Point gets stipends just like we do, but at the same time, whoever it is that's running West Point is saying that we will only do so much for whatever we get. It doesn't fit under the same category as what we do. So for those reasons, we've drawn the line in sand, I guess you might say, and we feel we've got every justification to do that.
Do you know what this is, our agreement with West Point? There is an agreement on.
Yes, well, very disagree with. Okay, let's, let's go back to 1995. The, there was an agreement as part of the law negotiations, I think, in 95, and it says the city of West Point will get a stop and, just like the other volunteer fire departments. And there was an agreement back in 1995, signed by the city and the county. So that set the stop in order. And city of West Point is $13,089 or $94 a year of general fund money gets a stop per that 1995 agreement. Then let's go to late 1990s, the service delivery strategy. All the cities checked off and everybody signed the document saying, all the cities will provide fire protection only within their city limits. Okay? So we have an official document signed by everyone, the citizen county, saying service territory is the city limits. So West Pointers have to come out and they choose not to. The other cities don't have to, but they do. So there's your law negotiations and that comes up for you all next December. There's your service delivery strategy agreement and that's how we've been operating for all these years.
Do we have any idea of how many general homes or businesses or residences that this would affect?
We probably can't come up with that number, but you know, honestly speaking, if you take, for example, down on Davis Road, Davis Road has fire hydrants running all the way back out to 18. But going in behind the industrial park, it doesn't. All those residents are in Flatshoals, the ones where they have a hydrant. If an insurance agent or somebody can say, well, West Point will accommodate that. Northwest is out of the picture because we're too far to get there in a timely manner. We're beyond our five miles a long time ago, at about Flatshoals Creek or even a bit south of there. So those residents that are often behind the industrial park, they don't have a fire rating. They're a tenant. Some of them are having to pay a civil higher insurance rates. Now, I'd love to have anyone here, you know, bitching about it, I'm sorry to say, but that isn't going to get us anywhere necessarily. The other thing is, I know for a fact and from experience that we have taken a verbal beating sometimes because we've taken so long to get to a call or we could have been there faster and, you know, we're pushing the envelope coming down 103 as it is right now. And when, some of the things that hampered us is when the county did away with the old, the bridge on Monument Road. We used to be able to shoot out across Monument Road, across the bridge, hit Marshall Williams and we could be down to the industrial park in half the time we are now. But, you know, since the bridge is gone, there's just a bunch of shoe flies down through there. And so it's, it's difficult for us at best to be able to respond under those circumstances. Well, at the same time, West Point is within spitting distance of a lot of these. So it's really one of those things, I can understand West Point's reluctance, but at the same time, I don't understand why they couldn't be a little more reasonable on this because we stood there on calls and they're, they're doing things that, that they're doing things that they probably shouldn't be doing, but at the same time to meet their requirements. They'll pull hoes, like I said before, or they'll just leave a scene. We've got one other factor that comes into play on this and that is that we get called out on calls, West Point will go out, they'll take care of the circumstance like a false alarm or an EMS call or something like that, but they won't cancel us. We'll run that distance and we'll get there and well, West Point is taking care of it. We find out there's a, I guess I should say, a difference of opinion and/or protocol between the 911 centers, whereas we don't get notifications, so we're running a call, going to the expense of home or people out and then get there and find it was for nothing. And I, I think that's probably one of those things that Strata broke the camel's back is that cooperation, we go a long ways here in helping us on this, but it doesn't alleviate the fact that we made a ton of calls annually in the areas where right now you all are seeing some development. We've got new houses down there and, well, these people come in thinking there's garbage and fire and everything else, just like they had wherever they came from. When we tell them we come from 15, 20 miles up the road, like, you know, they can't believe that, so.
Do we have any idea, Mr. Warren, how many calls we may have called, say, in the last six months?
On, on Flatshoals, we probably are in neighborhood of, we run at least two to three a month into that area. And that doesn't alleviate some of our backup because our backup right now, you all know that we were trying to, because of low manning and all and frequency of calls, we're trying to back up each of our, Antioch runs calls behind us down there. Richard back there can attest that he's, he's run a long way sometimes for nothing too. And we have Pine Mountain, Oakwell that have done some of the same things, so. I wish that somehow we could sit down and resolve this in some way. We've attempted to, it hasn't happened. It's not something we're proud of. I mean, we're proud of the fact that we've done what you all asked, but, you know, I think there's a limit to some of this that particularly on, with the economic situations and manpower and everything else that it is today, that we want to help, that's what we're there for, but that's the situation.
Well, I can attest, this is, I'm in the district's under issue. It's been talked about many, many, many times at the chief's meetings. I wish that Commissioner Grant were here since this is his district and I think he probably would have some, some opinion on this. And I don't know what we do. Somebody else may have a good idea, but I don't know what we do. Other than to possibly, my suggestion would be that Randy and Mr. Moon and maybe you and Jack McPunk sit down and see if you can't work this out. That would be where I would start, but I don't know if that's the answer.
Randy, I was going to ask, when West Point's agreement is up in December? Is that a negotiable, negotiable agreement?
Yes, that is a law negotiation, December 2022.
2022, that's far away. Could you and the mayor have this conversation?
We, don't forget, we had this conversation about two years ago and Commissioner Grant, myself, City Manager Moon, the Fire Chief Smith up there, up in West Point, I think he's retired since then, right?
He just retired.
He's just retired, okay. Yeah. So we've had a series of meetings already and we have come to a principle to an agreement that was presented at the retreat with the board. It didn't take any traction. The, the concept approved in principle is for the city, the county to build a, a fire station in the business park, which is in the city of West Point. And if we build it, then in principle, West Point will man it because they have a combination of fire EMS. So they will, they will man it certain hours a day, maybe not 24/7, but maybe part of the 24/7. So if the county were built a, a fire station in the business park, the city of West Point will man with fire EMS a portion of the day. That was agreed upon in principle. But when we went to the board of trade about a year ago, no, they didn't take any, they didn't get any traction. So now it's been in limbo since then. So we have come up to an agreement that we need to push forward politically and managerially.
On the times when West Point is not manning it?
Can we cover?
Yeah. Then you cover.
You still have the same mission.
But when they man it, they would go to these areas that, in Flatshoals?
They would, again, in principle, this was a year ago, in principle, they would man it and come out within like three or four miles of the city limits to capture these, these streets and runs.
I remember a little conversation, but I guess after we left the retreat, we didn't say go forth and do it.
Correct.
And we probably needed to do that. So could you bring that back to us?
Yes.
And with a recommendation?
One of the things I'd like to inject is, is that in all these discussions and meetings where that agreement was formed, there was no Northwest agreements. So Northwest has not ever been asked their opinion and I'm sorry, I think that's wrong.
No, no, we've had discussions on this. We've talked about this principle and this agreement in principle numerous times.
I know and we, we said we were opposed.
Make sure we're clear then.
We were, we were, we said we were opposed to it because what, West Point was not going any further than they do now.
But they've agreed somehow to go four or five miles outside the city limits, but now there's new political leadership and there's new virtues, so that philosophy might be changing now because of duration of time.
Well, here I kind of, I kind of have to agree with you. I have a concern that Harris County spends their tax money to build a fire station that we turn over to West Point. And I'm like you, I am not sure what you have on a piece of paper is what I override what they do, but just, that's just based on what I've heard over the last 10 and a half years of the fire choosing.
The solution, though, honestly, is that that's a Band-Aid to build a station, as nice as it would be, but if West Point isn't going to man it, I can speak from experience when they had the fire at the industrial park and if it hadn't been for Antioch, Northwest Harris Valley and a few others being in there, West Point couldn't handle the fire because they pulled up on that fire with a mansion and two people. That's the way they're manned. Now, they've got a response, a big responsibility in that, and I'm not here to condemn their brothers and sisters and we're all in this for the same reason, but at the same time, West Point at that point would still be being paid, they'd have a facility, Northwest is still going to run into that area for the rest of the residents down there and get no remuneration or recognition at all. If it would count against our ISO or if it do something, that's one thing, but we get nothing under those circumstances. And I'm sorry, I just don't think that's fair. The better way to go at it would be to realign that whole fire district, get an ISO and expand it for West Point because I can tell you, one of you needs to sit with us, I know that Bucky's back there, but we've run clear down through West Point out on the interstate for a fatality that's right there by the welcome station. And we run where some fella decided to end his life and jump off from the top of a semi going by. I mean, those are tough calls. I can't, and we've, we've had vehicles burn up with people. You know, you, you make that burn and emotionally and everything else, I'm sorry, it's, it's a tough one. And I think it's time that, that agreement may be the greatest thing in the world, but it doesn't solve the issue of the residents being able to get some certification for their insurance rates in that district. Because once you're over five miles from a station, you're a tenant, you don't even get a rating. So your, your insurance goes outside. Then on the flip side, you look at us and we've got major construction going on in the Piedmont subdivision around right now and we're having our hands full sometimes just back at home on that interstate. I don't know if you all saw the notification recently, but we lost an EMS member that was trying to help out and they were on their way to help with item and one of them got killed and one of them is in pretty decent condition right now, but it's hell out there. People don't give a damn. And so for us, from our standpoint, I think we have to be a little bit selfish in this regard.
Any other questions?
So looking at this Northwest scenario, which it doesn't need to get to us, I mean, we need to come up with something definitely for, for, also for our neighbors. So what is day two? What is, what is our contingency plan? Let's, let's say, for instance, like West Point doesn't want to, doesn't want to, lots of letters, what they've already sent down as far as the ground is due, what is our day two? What is our contingency? What is it? Where do we look for next steps?
Okay, okay. Don't, don't forget, people have tended to forget, homeowners forget or don't even know. Harris County does not provide fire protection. Okay? Harris County does not, government does not provide fire protection for the unincorporated area. We don't. The county relies on private companies through 501(c)(3), for example, to provide fire service on behalf of the county. So we don't provide the service. It's not good for a lot of money. We can create a fire tax district, for example, build fire stations, any EMS stations. Don't forget, Mr. Hawkins, Chief Hawkins is talking about fire. St. Rock is with EMS. If there's an EMS call anywhere in that general area, the Davidson Road area, EMS has come either out of Mountain, Mountain Hill or Pine Mountain. That's easy, 20 minutes away. So these people we're talking about have ISO rated 10, they're paying astronomical a fire insurance premium, but they're not getting any, they're getting very low level of EMS service to the county that we provide. Okay? We don't provide fire protection. We provide EMS protection. They're 20 minutes away. Okay? And they have to go to a grand hospital, that's another 20 more minutes. I wouldn't live in that part of the county because of no fire protection and very minimal EMS protection. That's why I live in the city, okay? So I can have higher level service, but I pay a lot more taxes for those services. Okay? So with that said, the next step would be to get into the fire business, which is a very, very expensive proposition, but it could be done, just like any other city or county in Georgia. So we would convert from a volunteer fire department to a partially paid to a fully paid over the years, but it's a very, very, very expensive proposition.
Can someone?
A taxpayer would have to pay, but they get a higher level of service. They get fire protection that they're not getting now.
But the other thing is, is if we were to realign the districts appropriately and give whatever personal reality to West Point and let Northwest pick up, if you would greatly, you know, reduce the amount of area we have to cover and distance we have to run. The thing is also, and I, I don't mean to step into Bucky's area, but West Point needs to step up a little bit more in terms of what they've got for obligations in the fire district county. They've got an industrial park and, you know, that, that's not something that realistically any of us, if we were still down there, we'd have to man up some and cover more often. And we're already manning some of our stations 24 hours a day with volunteers. So it's, it's, it's a trend. Going to pay fire department, like Randy says, that's a big hurdle and may take a long, long time. And I think there's, I honestly feel like there's a, there's a, an area that we could address that would overcome some of that.
Chief Hawkins, we asked you.
What is the process for realigning?
Okay, okay.
Hey Randy, can we get back to seven bottom this on our appearance?
That's right.
So let's just come back and revisit this in just a little while.
Perhaps we need to put this on our next retreat to go more in depth about this.
Our next retreat will be, when is our next?
October, next month. Or it could be in September. It could be anytime, no one.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I'm about.
I got my September.
This is relation.
Up next, we have the public hearing. We'll call this Public Hearing Order. Um first, we'll have a reading of the application that the applicant can make their case in their presentation. It'll have to be followed by comments of individuals in favor of the application, followed by comments. From individuals in opposition to the application, after that, the applicant can make their, their letter of summary. Um after, once that's completed, we will close the public hearing and we'll take action. Uh the rezoning application tonight is for Antioch Volunteer Fire Department in Orton and Avon Co. The location is fifty-four eleven and fifty-four thirty, Georgia Highway two ninety-one in Hamilton.
Two ninety.
Highway two ninety. I wonder what two ninety-one was.
It's a typo.
On map, zero one seven, parcel was one forty-four and part of zero twenty-two eight, land lot twenty-seven, land district nineteen. Uh they would like to rezone one and then point six nine acres for a total of point six nine acres. It is currently A one, and they would like to zone to C four. Uh the present use is Antioch Volunteer Fire and vacant land. We propose use as increased parking and training area for Antioch Volunteer Fire Department. Planning, planning commission recommendation was approval with no conditions, and the staff recommendation was also approval with no conditions. Um is someone here for Antioch decision?
Yes, sir. I'm Richard McKinnon, Chief of the Antioch Fire Department. The reason we're having this request is that, um, previously, we obviously had the fire station grounds across the street was the Dollar General. Previous, well, it wasn't thinking about it. The previous owners allowed us to use that lot to park in for special events, um, do training, field training, stuff like that. Currently, where our station is located, we have no property. Once firefighters get their vehicles parked, we have nowhere to pull those, nowhere to do any type of outside training. The original purchase of where our station was at was purchased from War Pop, the previous Chief of the Antioch. Um he has quite a few more acres in that general area. What we're wanting to do is purchase that property to the right, the south side of the station, um, for parking and just have some, you know, some ground layout so we can do what we need to do for fire exercises. Part of the, I want to say the big reason for rezoning is the property size. It's not ten, two acre minimum for, um, does not mean two acre minimum for the current zoning, um, regulations, I guess. And then so changing the zoning to it gives us the option to get a smaller lot. Because that property that, to the right side, to the south side, it's, it is just not usable property. And it actually, if we were to cut into that, it'll change the water flow, the drain off, a little bit of my pay rate. So our request is to, that's our reason for our request, is to get a zone so we could add some parking. Keep in mind, it's going to take us a couple of years, one year to buy property, another year to get the trees down and whether I'm in asphalt or gravel. So it's going to take us a year to get to that point.
Are there any questions for Mr. McKinnon? Are there any individuals who'd like to speak in the paper of the applicant's decision? Are there any individuals who'd like to speak in opposition? Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us, any other information? If that's it?
That's, that's the.
Close the public hearing. Um, and we'll take action. Um, is anyone have a motion?
I'll make the motion since this is in the district that I represent. I make the motion to approve.
Okay, and I will second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion, please. That will return us to our third item on our agenda this evening, which was old business. And this is a second reading of alcohol application of Kim Thark from the Chamber of Commerce. Um, the Chamber of Commerce is having a special event at Roosevelt State Park during which alcohol will be provided, distributed, given away. And alcohol order requires temporarily special event license for such an event.
Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity to speak for y'all. We are very excited about this first ever experience event that we're going to have at the George State Park. And we have a wonderful menu prepared and just want to thank y'all for the opportunity to go forward with this event.
Does anyone have any questions? And the recommendation that we received from the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office was approval. It does meet all qualifications. Are there any individuals, the signal that would like to speak in favor or not position? Really? Do we have a motion this evening?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll make a second.
All right, a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion, please. The fourth item on our agenda, the big one, carries us into new business, and Ms. Lexman's going to present this this evening.
Um, we have the opportunity each year to honor our Harris County chapter of the American Business Women's Association with a proclamation. And this year, we would like to honor them with a proclamation to recognize September the twenty-second as American Business Women's Day. So I'll read the proclamation, which states, whereas the American Business Women's Association was founded in nineteen forty-nine and is a national association of working women that has a strong tradition of promoting advancement of women. And whereas business, economic, and social analysis indicate that the current trends of women entering the workforce and attaining increasingly responsible positions will continue to contribute to the development of businesses and communities. And whereas the mission of the American Business Women's Association is to bring together businesswomen of diverse occupations and to provide opportunities for them to help themselves and others grow personally and professionally through leadership, education, networking, support, and national recognition. And whereas, American Business Women's Association's Day was initiated in nineteen eighty-two as a national day on which Americans can recognize the achievements of the millions of employed women in the United States. And whereas, joint congressional resolutions were passed in nineteen eighty-three and nineteen eighty-six designating September the twenty-second as National American Business Women's Day. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Wednesday, September the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one as American Business Women's Day in Harris County. So proclaim the seventh day of September twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that. And all those in favor? Motion, please. The next item on our agenda this evening is a resolution for the ARP funding for airport in order for the county to receive thirty-two thousand dollars for the airport from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. A resolution authorizing acceptance of the G-DOT contract for the same as required. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I make the motion to approve this resolution for the county to receive thirty-two thousand dollars, ARPA.
And is there a second?
Second. There is one thing. Um, is there a listing of what we have already for the ARPA, of the ARP money? Haven't we already not officially committed some of the money?
Yes.
Can I get a listing?
Nancy has it ready to pass out.
Do you give the interview?
Okay, all right, thank you.
But this is specifically airport, though.
Yes, this is not part of the county's allocation.
Well, that's what I, well.
This is not part of the county's allocation. This is a whole different part of it.
I understand that, but I'm still reluctant. As soon as we're on that subject, I still am.
And Nancy has that list, uh, it's going to be distributed tonight to, to the board in anticipation of the September twenty-first uh meeting to talk about that ARP and the county's allocation and the county's Rogers.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Commissioner. I was wondering if I can say something on the African-American Business Women's Association?
Yes, we can.
Um, in the past, we have been able and have been invited to be up front, um, to take a picture of our group.
Sure, sure. Let's do that.
Would you allow that?
Absolutely.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Okay, one more. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Your turn.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the agreement with Trader Business Services Personal Property Verification. Uh, this is the usual annual document that tabled business services in connection with personal property verification in the Tax Assessor's Office. Uh, funding is included in the fiscal year of twenty-one, twenty-two, tax assessor's budget in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. Is there a motion? I would make a motion to approve this. Um, is there a second? Any further discussion?
I read this, um, this process, but Randy, can you just tell us the process in layman's terms?
Okay, this is in the Tax Assessor's Office. Basically, the Tax Assessor's Office periodically does personal property audits of commercial businesses to make sure what they submitted in personal property is actually what is in, on the, on the ground. And then therefore, they make corrections. And it, not at ten times, it produces additional county property taxes.
So how are those selected? Are they just randomly selected, annually, or is it a percentage of businesses?
But, but seventy-five hundred dollars might only do four or five a year. So it's a very, very, very small amount of businesses that get audited.
It's an agent there that shows you that it's going to pass you.
Yeah, I just didn't know how they were chosen. Are they random? Or is it a percentage of businesses? I'll, I'll follow that. I was just interested in what the process is.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion, please. The next item on our agenda this evening is a request for a tax refund. Um, Mr. Garrett Faulkner, one seventy-eight, Rollin Farm Way, Midland, was asking to be refunded five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twelve cents. Reason being is a skit scare that he owned in two thousand and nineteen. He paid for the taxes for the year of twenty twenty. Uh, Tax Commissioner of Bereas for the refund. Mr. Fuller paid the taxes for twenty twenty. However, he sold the machine in twenty nineteen. And the Lord of Tax Assessors of Bereas. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion, please. The next item on our agenda this evening is our L-Meg twenty twenty-one and twenty-two projects.
Mr. Chairman, a citizen did sign up to speak about this particular item.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Allen, if you want to run us through the, um, projects here, then we'll.
Again, this is an annual event. The county did receive from the Georgia Department of Transportation its annual, what we call L-Meg, the local maintenance and improvement program. It's granted from the State Department of Transportation to all the cities and counties in the state based on a formula. And it's for county road resurfacing needs. It's only for resurfacing. Um, our county allocation this year is right at eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And it requires a ten percent match of about eighty-one thousand dollars. So the total project budget for this year will be eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. The Public Works Director has identified three county roads that need resurfacing. The first one being Tramble Mill Road from St. Route eighty-five to Kings Cap Road, about four miles, estimated cost five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Calhoun Road from Lower Blue Springs to Hudson Mill Circle, two point two miles, at two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars as estimated cost. And Copeland Road from St. Route one sixteen to the Dead End, about one mile. All these total about seven point two miles. And the total would be nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. That is an estimate. But with today's volatile prices on everything, materials, labor, availability of products, this is a big guess at this point in time. This won't be bid out until next, early next year. So our best guess now is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for seven point two miles of resurfacing. This project was included in the Public Works budget, and the required ten percent match will come from T-Slos. Bid overages, if any, will also come from T-Slos. Right now, the expected and anticipated bid overage is only forty-three thousand dollars. But with the bid next year, it might be a lot higher. It could be lower. We just don't know. Um, it'll be bid out early twenty-two and be completed by June thirtieth next year. A motion of motion needed to submit the road list to G-DOT, and once they approve the list, we'll get the funding, a wire transfer to us. We'll bid it out next year and be completed by next June thirtieth.
And who's our successor?
Bobby Harrelson.
Mr. Harrelson.
You wanted to speak about this?
Right.
Did you want to speak about this?
I sure do. Bobby Harrelson, one fifty-nine, A circle, I'm not without it. Just for the record, A circle is a prescription easement. I move to the southern line, easements to the public, for lawful use. Harris County has a, any maintenance on that road. That's James York, oh, James York was the charge of the, of the maintenance. It's going to end up like the contract that was met in June, in July, December, in February. But a completion date of June of this year. And nobody knows why they didn't do the work.
Is that a restructuring? Is that a restructuring question?
It's been not talked. That contract, contract to be bonded, and it should have a declaration after, after June. Every day after June, they should pay declaration. I don't remember. They sharpened on that paint that this could be striped. A circle was researched in nineteen eighty three, and that's when the latest paint was put on. If you can find one stack of paint out there today, I'll eat that right here and eat it in front of me. This happens, it's insane, everybody. There's a lot of things going on with anybody. I said right there, and I cannot hear what these people are saying. That's the highest price here today that the government is paying. And I still can't hear. Well, so it won't be no surprise. We're going to be, and we don't complain about everything in this building. It don't meet. It's very disgusting. We can't hear. The doors don't meet it. If you on this floor have a bike, we can go out the front or the side door. What can happen is somebody in a wheelchair on the third floor. I don't know, they're supposed to be set to automatically shut down. But you have a bike. How are you talking about? I, I'm pretty angry right now. I had a I had a hard night. The total revenue first, they refused to send me my last year's refund. I called the, I was representing, and he wouldn't return the call. Besides the three thousand dollars, Harris County, old lady, disability. Yesterday, three juveniles, they were not even old enough to be called teenagers. They said they would take my ATV, the copper rod. I had about two, that used the garden. They sold them away. The sudden, uh, we got out, we were on A circle, A street, K street, went back on the whole tour, up to the bus station, and we turned on A street. My dog was laying down in the ditch. We seen the dog, I didn't see, I can't see that. I didn't see the dog before we seen the ATV, and we pushed back into the woods. The key was gone. They run, I found out, look, look at me, that they had run over my dog with my ATV. Last night, when I did it, I went back in the ATV. It was a girl, T-shirt, extended T-shirt, probably cost twenty five hundred dollars. I was all lying back there. The deputy took a picture, had it recorded and all that. I said, you, the pink T-shirt, you should know, you got pictures. We yesterday knew, afternoon, I went out there, you got the T-shirt. It was wet. I hung it up on the, closing a hundred foot porch. About dark, these three kids showed up again. The little girl seen that T-shirt, she snapped it off and up, rolled her, where she live. There's a faster shit to run. I told the other two kids, I said, go get your mother and daddy, come back down here, stupid kid, straighten this out. Well, they didn't do it. The sheriff, we come back out there. They bent out the porch. I think they did talk to somebody last night, and nobody's done with you yet. So I'm not very happy. Not to get old, hundred and nine percent service connect disability. But I tell you right now, I'm gonna be coming down on a lot of things right here. Starting with stuff that don't beat the disability act, a lot of other things that's been going wrong. Overlook law, we don't need come close to meeting. They also call that sunshine law. The sun ain't shine on this place since Danny Bridges. Had to take a medical, I saw. So, I thank you for your time. I'm not going away. They killed lives, you tell. There's over four thousand veterans in this county. The American, that's eight thousand people, all old names. I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen up. I hear the people. I don't agree what they said. That's what I hear. And all of you need to go. I don't agree with that. So I'm gonna start looking at what's going on, and start checking the people who pay the taxes around. Thank you. Say that.
Thank you.
On our twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two L M E G projects list, Mr. Allen's provided us with the dollar figures and the amount. Does anyone have a motion? I'll make the the motion to submit the road list to G doc. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I got one question. They expect the bid to be just under forty thousand. How how is that? How is that?
That is the aesthetic cost of nine hundred and thirty six thousand minus the G doc allocation and the county's temperament match. The difference, the difference between those two numbers. Again, that is anticipated until the bids come in. Uh, early next year.
Now, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening, um, again, Mr. Allen, and this is for a
garbage truck. Mr. Chair of Work Commissioners, a bid award for a new garbage truck. This year's approved budget and the solid waste fund in particular contains two hundred and forty thousand dollars to purchase one replacement twenty five cubic yard garbage truck. County staff including solid waste director, the vehicle maintenance director prepared bid specifications and distributed those advertised during July of this year. On the deadline date of August twenty fourth, the county received two bid responses, one from Environmental Products of Atlanta for one hundred and eighty seven thousand five hundred dollars, which did not meet bid specs. And the other bid from Peak State Truck Centers out of Norcross Georgia, a bid of two hundred and thirty three thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars, which met the bid specs. County staff is available in the city bid, has recommended that Peak State Truck Centers of Norcross be awarded this bid for a total cost of two hundred and thirty three thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars, which is two point seven percent below budget, right at sixty five hundred dollars below budget. This company is the only company that meets all bid specifications. One existing garbage truck we brought back to the board for to declare a surplus county property and disposed of in accordance with county policy once the new garbage truck is delivered and in operation. If approved, the replacement garbage truck will have a delivery date of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty days, or about April of next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Allen?
Randy, do you remember what bid specs were not met?
They didn't re, um, return half of the documents that were acquired.
They were suspended.
Plus, again, the business period, the specifications for the actual vehicle, they did not meet on Saturday. So they told themselves.
From what they submitted, I mean, they read the specs?
No.
So, okay, so that would be the answer to the discrepancy from the forty thousand, not the difference between the two.
Yeah, they they spec that.
Okay, okay, so that was, getting surprised.
Any other questions? And is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Peak State Truck Centers in the amount of two hundred and thirty three thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars.
I will second that. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item number ten on our agenda this evening is for a budget for the venue, uh, purchase a used ambulance.
Mr. Chair of Work Commissioners, uh, the county's EMS department has allocated seven ambulances to serve the entire county. Four of those seven are frontline units ranging from model year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one, and three of the ambulances are reserve units ranging from model year two thousand nine to two thousand seventeen. New ambulances are very difficult to get these days. Uh, Ford is not developing any of the F four fifty chassis that we use. Uh, F four fifty chassis won't be available until at least twenty twenty three. So chassis are very difficult to get these days with the supply chain issues that are all over the world. And in our opinion, ambulance will be very hard to get for foreseeable future. However, the company that the county purchased the previous four ambulances, Custom Truck and Body Works of Wickbury, Georgia, has two twenty seven thirty ambulances that they acquired from trade-ins in the same configuration the county uses. Custom Truck and Body Works has agreed to sell the county one of these twenty seventeen ambulances at trade-ins for twenty five thousand dollars with a hundred and seventy nine thousand miles on it. County staff believes this is a prudent acquisition and investment to replace an older ambulance, the two thousand nine model, with a new ambulance in light of difficulties in obtaining new ambulances in the future. The vehicle maintenance director has seen the, and evaluated the twenty seventeen ambulance, and is recommending this purchase. If approved, fast and comfortable, splashed twenty nineteen under public safety vehicles, which has plenty of money available for those kind of things. Lastly, the sale of the existing two thousand nine county ambulance will partially offset the cost of the newer twenty seventeen ambulance. A motion of motion needed to approve this budget member and acquire the used ambulance. Bucky Searcy, EMS director is here, all the body ambulances is here, to answer any questions the board may have on this per, on this proposed purchase.
Any questions?
With this one, a hundred and seventy nine thousand miles, twenty seventeen, you don't have any immediate concerns with maintenance?
Bobby has rough, rough looked over it initially. If y'all agree to this tomorrow, we're gonna put it on the rack. So they ran it back to their plant, fixed every little, little cranky with the box, even if it did wrong. They agreed to let us take a test truck and put him in our shop. We can put it up on rack, do a spec. It would offset the two thousand, it's got two hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. We could put more positions from an old nine to a seventeen at twenty five thousand, and Bobby thinks we can get enough on a ten to twelve out of the nine. So it's, it's got eighty thousand miles, it's modern. Uh, and what you gotta remember is our nineteen's, our new trucks only have four thousand, that's just two, our nineteen's, maybe two thousand sixty four, and these are all to the warranty. So when something goes wrong with them, they go to a dealership and they sit for a month. I have one prudent reserve, and this would give us two, it would improve, and right now, haul volume is cut, this thing will be. County manager said, we can't get anything, this may be the way for the future for the next couple of years, and makes good sense to us. Bobby likely said, girl, Ellen, if you're approved, we'll look at it tomorrow, and we'll continue to partner with, well, we say some of the county. Uh, but where they came from, severe, severe damage, Tennessee, P and F, but on rotation, which is what we're trying to do. So this truck, the seventeen, where it was serviced in eighteen, ran eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, half a year, so those miles in two and a half years are road miles. And what they do is every four years, they rotate three trucks. But the, the maintenance offsets the cost of the truck. The truck we're trying to offset has seventy five thousand dollars in maintenance. So this is, this is a small cost.
Can you play it?
Of course, I have a question. Did you have a question? Is there a motion this evening?
I'll make the motion that we approve this, it sounds like a pretty good deal.
Yes, I think.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Would you amend that motion? I'd like to second it, but I would like to say pending their examination of it tomorrow. Because if if you find something tomorrow, then we don't worry about this.
Right, right.
So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda this evening are project updates, and Mr. Allen will present these to us.
Before using the budget update, I had asked you if you can share our official census contribution list.
Sure. The twenty twenty census numbers have come out, and they're quite interesting, in my opinion, not only at the state level, but at county level as well. I printed out the counties, every county in Georgia and their population, and they ranked it. Harris County is fifty fourth in the state out of a hundred and fifty nine counties in in area population. So we're the fifty fourth most populated county in the state out of a hundred and fifty nine. It's not bad. With a population of thirty four thousand six hundred and sixty eight. Ninety four, six. Thirty four thousand six sixty eight. In twenty ten, that number was thirty two thousand twenty four, a difference in ten years of two thousand six hundred and forty four people.
Difference of what? Tell me what you saw.
Two six.
Two thousand six forty four. So I thought that was interesting. Again, I was scrolling down this interesting web, um, scrolling down the, what ACC just sent out was very eye popping. When it comes to racial demographics, Harris County is seventy six percent black. Going down the line, um, Harris County has published age eighteen and over seventy seven point three percent. Oh, those were interesting. Hey, there's a ton of facts on this, that's just the ones that popped out to me, so. Probably buried in here somewhere. So I thought that was interesting to see a bunch of, um, a lot of counties, I noticed, a lot of counties have lost population from twenty ten to twenty twenty, more than I had expected. For example, Dorton County in Albany, lost almost nine thousand people in that ten year period.
You know, they got all of those tragedies toward their, and
Right.
plenty, all kinds of things going on there.
You know, Baldwin County lost population. Merryweather County lost population.
No jobs.
You know, Washington County, most of them are, I mean, they're all north counties, north and south of of the state. Mostly they're in the south part of the state. I mean, every page of, of every I mean, every page, of every page, there's lost population in various counties. So Harris County is a positive, so that's good. So it was quite interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, the priority work number two, replace the chairs and commission meeting room. We've ordered several months ago to deliver, won't be until November. You know what they told us that the problem? There's a shortage of phone. And he can't physically make the chair. Against supply chain issues everywhere, lack of phone. Number four, complete the updated land development codes. If we file with county development department on September 13th, the first reading at the planning commission will be October 20th, and a second reading and adoption, if everything goes well, on November 2nd at the board commissioners meeting. If all goes well, then the revised UHC will go into effect November the 16th. Number eight, replace the roof of the prison. The bid opening is September 30 and board consideration on October the 19th. I'm sure to think what that bid's gonna be. Number 11, the annual L-MA resourcing program. The board approved that this evening and will submit that to G-DOT tomorrow. Number 16, purchase a new skid steer with attachments. That can be delivered during late September, and we are reaching to use it for many different purposes. Number 18, develop Pelsa Park. Right now, we are, we have ordered permanent gates, signs, the lake aerator, a dock. We're in the process of constructing some, the maintenance facility, a pavilion, and we're doing a lot of land clearing activities right now, a lot, by mowing, bush hogging, and we'll get a skid steer, we'll finish it up.
We do our retreat there?
Yes. We have electric and water. AC. We have a restroom, and it works.
Well, should I see his restroom and pipe alcohol?
We hope to have, but we should have carpet and a refrigerator. Number 22, phase four of the Meadowport Railroad Recreation Trail is ongoing, conclusion about early December. The trail has been paved, or is mostly paved. They're putting the garden rows out, and they're rebuilding the bridge over US 27. It's going glacially slow. And they're gonna be, that US 27 this weekend, the entire road will be closed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And that's a course on our website for a couple days now. So this weekend, US 27 will be totally closed under the bridge, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. on those three nights, just to help those guys finish that bridge. Number 23, the survey and design that began on phase five of the railroad recreation trail. So that is proceeding. Number 27, rejuvenate the airport's apron using G-DOT grant funds. That's on bid, been open since September 23rd, board consideration on October the 5th. Number 31, update the airport's five-year capital improvement program and submit to G-DOT by October. That has been discussed at airport, various airport committee meetings, and it is scheduled to go to the board October 5th for approval, and then submitted to G-DOT before the deadline. And that is the annual capital improvement program for the airport. Number 35, replacement garbage truck. That was approved tonight, and God willing, it will be there next April. Number 42, phase one of the renovation courthouse uses plus 19 funds. The architect is designing that the project could be built out in December, awarded in February, and the entire project should be completed by late June of next year. That is the canopy, I mean, the balcony, store windows, painting, and other systems. That's only one of many phases of the courthouse renovation project. That's, yeah, my, it's made of the road. And there'll be many phases to, from this point on. Number 43, the capital improvement projects using the federal RP funds that county was allocated of 3.4 million. This will be on the agenda for September 21st, the next meeting, for further consideration. Nancy has in your pockets tonight the proposal, along with the National Association of Counties' interpretation of all the rules, which is a very easy-to-read 16-page interpretation of all the federal rules. So this is the projects we're recommending to be funded, about the 3.4 million, a phase one. Number 45, impact fee study to fund parks recreation and public safety capital projects. Yesterday, on Friday, Friday, we received the methodology reports, which is the first stop on many of the impact fee process. So the methodology report is preliminary. It's given to the advisory committee for their review and comments, and they're having a meeting on September 14th at 4:30 at the library to go over this report and the revised comments. Then those comments will be incorporated to the document and brought back to the board October 5th for the board reviewing comments and consideration. After the methodology report is completed, then a capital improvements element will be prepared. Again, it gets more specific. It goes from general to more specific. So it'll go from the methodology report to a capital improvements element, and that has various publicarians, a lot of review by the regional commission, and then the board will finally approve after, after it goes through the process of the CIE, capital improvement element, and that's the new chapter of the top plan. And once it passes that, then draft audits will be prepared. And once the board is satisfied with the draft audits, we'll have various publicaries of the audits, and then it will be approved. And then the impact fee, if successful, if it gets that far, will then be implemented. So it should be finished probably next March of 2022, going through all this process. So there's lots, a lot of checks and balances along the way. Number 48, relocate various kind of records to the old Carver School. McGraven has been approved by both the board of education and the work commissioners. It was effective September 1st. We're relocating records right now. The old house behind the not moving center is now empty, and all the records have been either disposed of or put in the Carver Center for further review. We have ordered several weeks ago, commercial shelving to go into the school for shelving of the records. Those shelving units haven't found any yet. We're waiting for them. And once we get them, then we're gonna put all the records, along with portable actions, equipment in those appropriate rooms.
What's your estimated date for moving the elections office?
Whenever they're ready. Right now, we're repainting, putting new carpet in, putting new telephone system in, getting a copier. I'll say in the next two or three weeks. It'll be ready for them to move, but they can move at their leisure. And last thing, number 50, assist the RVRC, the River Valley Regional Commission with the T-Splus continuation referendum. It is now scheduled for May, May of 2022. It was pushed back from March to May. And we submitted five of the projects for the RVRC ground team consideration. They received over 200 projects from this area, costing over $1.8 billion. But they only have $399 million for funding. So surprised we're gonna get cuts, or not cut, but maybe reduced.
Do you know when the rat time will begin?
No, I do not. There are a lot of, a lot of discussions, one-on-one with cities and counties in the region, you know, what do you really, really need? What can you, what do you really not need? For example, we put in 13 miles of the Meadowport Trail. Well, can you do five? Sure. I mean, you know, to cut down from the 1.8 billion to the almost 400 million. So there is some compromise and sacrifice going on, but they said all of our projects were well-received. They're really popular projects. Of the five, some are gonna be funded, I believe, some aren't. So we're gonna keep plugging along. You can see the most recent plus have lost collections. They're keeping up with budgets, and T-Splus, they're keeping up with budget, and building permits. So far this fiscal year, July and August, there's been 52 building permits issued, 24 July and 28 in August. Again, it is a very healthy start for single-family building permits in the county, two months of the 12 months of the fiscal year. You see the solid waste tonnage? Again, that's every appreciation. We have the answer. Any questions to the board in there?
Any questions, Chairman Wood? Mr. County, do you have something for us to say?
Yes, Chairman, the board is so inclined. I do have some litigation matters that I'd like to discuss with the board in the executive session.
And there are motions for executive session?
I'll make it.
Second that. All of those in favor?
Just for location?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
That's what.
I'm gonna be Thursday for my resume.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All of those in favor? Meeting adjourned.